Okay, welcome back. We're going on to nine point three point one, I believe. It's on. I don't know if I'm on. Yeah, I am.
Good afternoon.
Good morning. Good afternoon, yep.
Excuse me. So bylaw number eighteen forty-nine is a roadway licensing bylaw. Bylaw number eighteen forty-nine is authorizing the MDA Bonneville to enter into an agreement to license the road allowance north of the northwest of twenty fifty-nine of four in accordance with policy number three A point zero one eight, as shown on the map in Appendix A. The applicants have applied to license the road allowance for the grazing of horses. Council did give first reading on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at the regular meeting of council. Public notification was completed as per the licensing of bylaw, licensing of roadways policy, as well as the M D public notification bylaw, with three letters of concerns that were received. The feedback received, attached as Appendix C, encompasses several issues such as trees being removed without prior authorization, an amplified line of sight and noise between neighboring properties, concerns about further tree removal, diminished privacy, as well as limitation on public access. So in accordance with policy number three A point zero one eight, the feasibility of granting the temporary road license is subject to agreement among the adjacent landowners. As administration has received several letters of concern, and there doesn't appear to be agreement among the adjacent landowners, administration doesn't see the merit in granting the temporary roadway license. So we are recommending that council proceed to second reading, and at that time, if it is defeated at second reading, the bylaw would not proceed any further, but if approved, would be able to move forward to third reading.
Counsel?
Yes, Counselor Swiger.
Just a question. The, sounds like kind of disputes or disagreements between whoever wants to lease it and the local landowners around it, so if they were to work that out, would it come, could it come back in six months or something, or whatever? I'm not sure.
It could definitely get applied for, but not within a six-month period. Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Crick?
Yeah, I guess hearing that there's some disputes, then I'll move option one.
You're gonna make a motion?
Yeah.
What's the motion? Option one, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay.
So if I may clarify, Mr. Reeve, just to, for the purpose of ensuring the bylaw does not proceed if council does not wish to grant this road license, you would still proceed with a motion to give the bylaw reading, and you would defeat the motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council, bylaw number eighteen forty-nine being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven roadway licensing be given second reading. Any other discussion on this? All right, I'll call for the vote. That's defeated. On to nine point three point two.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a great rest of the day. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, counsel. So today, we are looking at bylaw number eighteen fifty-five, to amend the Lakori major area structure plan, or bylaw number seventeen eighty-two. So this amendment is a relatively minor change. It's being done in order to allow for the implementation of different districts beyond just the rural industrial district within the Lakori area. So more specifically, the areas identified for industrial under the Lakori major area structure plan. So this amendment would change wording, as you can see on the screen here, for section six point six, just to allow for intent, for districts intended for industrial purposes to be used within this area. So any direct controlled industrial, or any future industrial districts that may be developed beyond just the rural industrial district that we have currently. And with that, it is being recommended that bylaw number eighteen fifty-five be given first reading. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, just looking for a motion. Yes, Counselor Swiger?
No, I'll make a motion for first reading.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making a motion that bylaw eighteen fifty-five, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, to amend Schedule A of bylaw number seventeen eighty-two, adopting the Lakori area structure plan be given first reading. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Onto bylaw, sorry, onto nine point three point three.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Welcome back.
Bylaw, oh, there you go. Bylaw number L U five seven five is being presented today for first reading. This bylaw is to amend the land use bylaw to create two new districts, the municipal district of Bonneville Regional Airport Direct Control District, and the Industrial Direct Control District. As directed by administration and council, these districts are being created to facilitate the development at the airport and future industrial lands which require special industrial designation. We have circulated this to adjacent municipalities, and no concerns reported. Circulation to adjacent landowners will occur prior to public hearing. We are recommending bylaw L U five seven five be given first reading.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Crick?
I'll move that be given first reading.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council, bylaw number L U five seven five, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, to amend bylaw number sixteen sixty-seven land use bylaw be given first reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto nine point three point four. Musical chairs here.
Yes. Sorry, could we actually bring up Appendix B here for this one? Sorry. Perfect, thank you. All right, so now we're looking at bylaw number L U five seven six. This is to, sorry, this is for consideration of the redistricting or rezoning of Lot Two, Block One, Plan zero nine two five nine nine zero, which is part of northeast thirty-three sixty-eight and west of the Fourth Meridian. The application is to rezone the property from agricultural district to rural commercial district. This would allow for the subject site to apply for an eat-drink facility, which is a permitted use under the rural commercial district. The registered owner is proposing the rezoning of the subject parcel. The current area for the subject parcel is approximately ten acres, or zero point four zero five hectares, and it has gone out for circulation, which will be presented at public hearing. And at this time, we are just recommending first reading. If you have any questions, I would be happy to-
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor-
I'll move first reading. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number L U five seven six, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, to amend bylaw number sixteen sixty-seven land use bylaw be given first reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Nine point three point five. Running out of chairs.
So administration is proposing changes to policy number two eight point zero zero nine, the municipal lands policy, following direction from council, to propose direct sale at fair market value as an added option for disposing of municipal lands. The proposed amendments to current policy two eight point zero zero nine is attached as Appendix A. Some notable changes and additions are the update of the section from general governance and administration services to planning and community services, update the name of the policy to improve clarity on the policy's purpose, disposal of municipal lands policy, update the public notification requirements to correspond with the M D's public notification bylaw, clarify aspects of the conditions of sale, update the aspects of the policy regarding tax forfeiture, replace procedure for tax forfeiture lands to read as subject to the requirements of provincial and municipal legislation, remove portions of the policy regarding leasing of municipal lands due to the creation of a proposed new separate policy, and add direct sale of municipal lands at fair market value as a second land disposal option. Proposed amendments were presented to the Committee of the Whole on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the Committee of the Whole recommended to council adopt the amended policy as presented. The proposed amendments were then presented to council on June twenty-seventh, where council directed administration to further amend the policy as follows. To clarify, aspects of direct sale at fair market value with respect to advertising timelines and processes if multiple offers are received, as well as add the opportunity for the licensee of an M D lands to purchase the land at fair market value should an M D licensing parcel become available for sale. So we did add those two amendments in four B I, and as well as section six B. So after making these additional amendments to the policy, our recommendation is that council adopts the amended policy number C dash three eight point zero one nine, disposal of municipal land policy, formerly known as municipal lands policy, as presented with the amendments.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for adding-
Yeah, go ahead.
Just thank you, Mr. Reeve.
Yeah.
Thanks for making those amendments, and I'll move that we accept this policy as presented now.
Mr. Reeve?
We need the first on first, though, eh?
Ms. Reeve, my apologies, I missed this before, before she presented her report, but because this item was tabled, we just, we need a motion lifting it from the table before we can proceed.
Yeah, I apologize, I seen that, too.
I'll make the motion to remove it off the-
Okay, thank you, Deputy Ree Fedeau, for making a motion on behalf of council that item nine point three point five, policy two A zero zero nine, municipal lands policy, amended to be lifted from the table. We're kind of doing this backwards, but we're getting it done. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, and also thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council, that council adopts amending policy number C three A zero one nine, disposal of municipal lands policy, formerly known as policy number two A zero zero nine, municipal lands policy, as presented. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Kravjak?
So if a person was leasing this land, and somebody bids more, they have the option to match? Is that in this policy?
So the leasing would actually have the first right to purchase it at fair market value?
They have a first choice.
They have first choice?
Correct.
And what if somebody bids more than that, or what? Or the, the price is set, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Nine point three point six.
So in conjunction with the proposed amendments to policy two eight point zero zero nine, the municipal lands policy, a new policy is required to ensure the municipality titled parcels-
I have to lift it first?
Oh, sorry.
Yep. I need a motion to lift this, so we can proceed. Thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making a motion on behalf of council that item number nine three six, policy number C three A zero two zero, licensing of municipal lands policy be lifted from the table. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. That's carried, and sorry, Stephanie, I seen that, and I didn't do it. Okay, continue.
All right. So a new policy is required to ensure the municipal titled parcels not required for municipal purposes are leased in a fair and equitable manner. The proposed policy C dash three eight point zero two zero is attached as Appendix A. Due to the proposed amendments to the municipal lands policy, which include the removal of all sections referring to the leasing of municipal lands, administration has developed a policy to ensure that the municipal titled lands not required for municipal purposes are leased in a manner that is specified, consistent, fair, and provides a reasonable return for the lands. The proposed policy expands on the original procedure, adding standards and methods for leased land classification, leased land, leased value minimum rates based on soil productivity, municipal tax information, information regarding noxious weeds, as well as requirements for pasture land and cultivation of lands. So proposed policy C dash three eight point zero two zero was presented at the Committee of Whole on May sixteenth of twenty twenty-three, and the following amendments were made as per council's direction. The addition of the right of first refusal, refusal for the licensee to match the awarded tender bid at the time of any re-tendering, and the deletion of Attachment A, which lists the available properties for tender. At the June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three council meeting, the policy was tabled. Due to amendments required for the draft, the draft policy disposal of municipal lands, the two policies were intended to be passed concurrently. So our recommendation is that council does adopt the new policy, C dash three eight point zero two zero, licensing, licensing of municipal lands policy as presented.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen? Yes, thank you, Deputy Ree Fedeau, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts new policy number C three eight zero two zero, licensing of municipal lands policy as presented. Any discussion on this motion? Tongue twister. Okay, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
Onto nine point three point seven. This would be Esther, I believe. Yes. Good afternoon.
So today, I'm presenting the twenty twenty-three community funding budget redistribution request from administration. In the twenty twenty-three operating budget, council had allocated two hundred thousand dollars for two community funding programs established through policy. Policy three C point zero one two, the Community Action Grant Policy, and policy two A point zero zero three, donation sponsorship and recognition policies. Administration is requesting council consider a redistribution of the funds between these two programs, considering the proportion of community requests actually received to date. The donation and sponsorship and recognition policy monetary budget was set at thirty thousand, and it has been oversubscribed and fully funded as of the end of June twenty twenty-three. There has been over forty-five monetary requests awarded, and currently seven requests pending at an estimated total of thirty-six thousand seven hundred. To date, the Community Action Grant Program budget was, which was set at a hundred and seventy thousand, has provided thirty-nine thousand five hundred to local nonprofit community groups for events and projects through their application process, with an addition of thirty-one thousand four hundred pending requests that were received and are currently being processed. The program has one application intake remaining, which is October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, for the events program sponsorship or small capital project streams. These are all at a set maximum value of five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, five thousand, per application.
Say aye.
Given the unlikelihood of the remaining available Community Action Grant budget to be fully utilized, administration recommends council considers transferring thirty thousand dollars from that grant program budget to the donation sponsorship and recognition policy budget. Attached for council's information is our usual approved funding for the last quarter, from April to June thirtieth, through the donation sponsorship and recognition policy. This reference to our strategic plan is this is in line with our goal number one, building a prosperous and sustainable community. The cost and source of funding, again, are just reiterated at the end of this. Should council approve the recommended action, our budget allocations, revised allocations will be sixty thousand for twenty twenty-three to the donation sponsorship and recognition policy, and a hundred and forty thousand to the Community Action Grant Program policy. Administration's recommendation is that council approves a transfer of thirty thousand dollars from the twenty twenty-three Community Action Grant Program operating budget to the twenty twenty-three donation sponsorship and recognition policy operating budget effective immediately.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? Thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making a motion on behalf of council, that council approves a transfer of thirty thousand from the two thousand twenty-three Community Action Grant Program operating budget to the two thousand twenty-three donation sponsorship and recognition policy operating budget effective immediately, minus the five hundred thousand. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'll call for the vote, then.
My motion was rejected.
That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto nine point three point eight.
So Planning and Community Services Department is presenting our second quarterly report for twenty twenty-three. This covers the months of April, May, and June of this year. We'll start off, we do have our department heads here to present these. I'll kick it off with asset management. And before I do so, I'd like to introduce our new asset management technician, who has joined us here in the last few weeks, Drew Franklin. He is a real asset, yes. He will be. So Drew actually joins us from Lakeland College, and has quite background, technical background in G I S, drone technology, and education, and facilitation. So we're very excited that he joined our team. So just a quick, brief update from an asset management side. Our team continues to work with the departments, collecting asset information and data into our new asset registry database. This requires lots of research and searching for our data records, through our data records and historical records, and maps, and drawings. They've also started drafting an asset management policy, which we'll be bringing forward to council later this year, for your review and hopeful approval. The Asset Management Steering Committee and working groups, which are the, the foundation of our structure internally for, for creation of our asset management program, those terms of reference were approved through leadership, and will be presented to council as part of our policy. We've continued on the training, staff training side, as well as participated in some cross-team departmental cohort training involving infrastructure services, finance, our team, as well as parks and recreation. More details are provided in the, in the report. As well, on our G I S side, there's been quite a few different various maps, forums, online survey systems that have been created through our G I S specialists, and those are also listed there. These included items such as working with emergency management, working with our health and safety department to help with the coordination of that health and safety rodeo that we held internally, some vector map projects for communications, assessment maps for inspections, and vacant land locations for the planning and development department. And on the G I S side, our ongoing projects include a waste services interactive map that's being created, and a road inventory updates in our G I S system. Any questions for asset management?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, good. I'll ask Lisa Foliate to come up and talk about planning.
Good afternoon. I have the second quarter progress report for planning and development. So in the second quarter, we did eighty-two development permits, with the average time to issue for permitted use was one day, and for discretionary use was twenty-five days, as they do need approval from council before we can approve them. Development permits were approved in all six wards across from the municipality, with the majority issued in wards five, six, and one. We had fifty-three building permits issued, with a total construction value of six million ninety-five thousand three hundred dollars, with an average time to issue those in fifteen days. As you can see, the majority of our building permits were residential, with only two industrial, one commercial, and five recreational permits. We had eleven housing starts in the second quarter. We had seven single-family dwellings, three ready-to-move homes, and one mobile home. We also had four new subdivision applications received, with the average time for approval of forty days, and we had two applications with a one-year approval extension in order to complete their surveying. Safety code permits, we had fifty-two electrical permits, seventeen plumbing permits, twenty-three gas, twenty-seven septic permits, and we dealt with two hundred and sixty-nine inspection reports during that time. Average time to issue the permits for electrical, plumbing, and gas are same day or next day, and three days for septic permits. Some updates, we had fifty-nine realtor reports completed in the second quarter, with a turnaround time of two days. We had ninety address signs ordered, and fifty-two picked up, the rural address signs. Average turnaround from, by the time we order them and pick up the signs is about two and a half weeks. We had two new non-compliances received, with three dissolved, with three resolved, all by obtaining approved development permits. And our satisfaction survey, eighteen surveys went out, and we did receive only three responses back, but all the responses received were satisfied and very satisfied on all the questions. I have a couple project updates. So our municipal development plan, the draft document was presented to council and received first reading on July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Referrals have been sent out to stakeholders, and a public hearing has been scheduled for September twenty-sixth of this year. Advertising was done online, and as well as going to be in the papers for the public hearing. Moose Lake and Highway fifty-five area structure plans, so we are currently in research stage with this, so on, ongoing research is being conducted for the Moose Lake and Highway fifty-five area structure plans, with some sort of public consultation to be set to take place early fall of this year. As well, administration was researching and creating two new land use bylaw districts, the Airport DC and the Industrial DC, and these proposed districts did receive first reading earlier on in this meeting. Do you have any questions?
Yes, Counselor Slipcheck.
Yeah, I noticed on building permits, you've got two industrial, one commercial. There would, in that fifteen-day average, too, as well, to provide a building permit, or were they a little longer, maybe?
Nope, they take the same amount of time. Yep.
So what was our previous, like, say, year, of two years past, what would it take? Have we dropped these numbers down much?
We actually didn't keep track of the, those kind of metrics in the past, so we've just started this year keeping track of those.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, I did actually want to bring up an update on our municipal lands and bylaw reserve education. So we are going to be, we have created some signs to be installed along our environmental reserves, as well as our municipal reserves, and where there are trails for people to use. So we, we have started that, and this summer, we're going to be installing some of the signs.
Hey, thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you so much.
Perfect, thank you.
Have a great day. Have a great day.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Reeve and council.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to present the second quarter progress report for economic development. In the second quarter, we had a request or lead generation from Invest Alberta for a lithium battery facility, and unfortunately, we did not possess the required assets to move forward with that particular project. In the second quarter, I continued industry stakeholder meetings with Invest Alberta in April, on April 15th, Iron Horse Trail on April 16th and June the 20th. Business-to-business opportunities with the American Canadian Chamber of Commerce on April 13th. Alberta Jobs and Economy and Trade, and that's actually changed to Jobs Innovation and Northern Development on April 20th. Portage College on May the 5th with regards to their economic development and sustainable programming that they've just brought online. Bonneville Chamber of Commerce, May 8th. I toured the Trades Exposure Center in Bonneville with Northern Lights Public School, May 12th. I attended and completed the Economic Development, Marketing and Attraction Training through the International Economic Development Council, May 16th and 17th. I had extensive Realtor meetings throughout the period, specifically on May the 19th. Met with Pathways for Luncheon on June the 20th, the Alberta Hub AGM at Lakeland College on June the 22nd, where I was joined with Councilor Sipchuk. Thank you very much. Events over that period and projects, I completed 20 business visits, inserted an article in the Loop and Rural Review, sent out or pardon me, completed Growing Your Business, the Q2 newsletter, initiated and completed website requests for quotation and initiated and completed the community investment profile request for quotation and secured the SiteLink Conference for 2024. Conferences and seminars in the second quarter, the Canadian Hydrogen Convention in Edmonton, April 23rd to 25th, the Community Planning Association Conference in Le Duc from May 1st to 3rd, the SiteLink Forum in Lac Le Biche, May 31st to June 2nd, the Global Energy Show in Calgary, June 13th to 15th, the Bonneville Oil and Gas Show, June 20th to 22nd. I would entertain any questions at this point in time.
Yes, Councilor Swagert.
Yeah, the lithium battery facility, we kind of lost all that because of transportation?
No, no. Based on the set of criteria that they set us, sent us, excuse me, it would be a number of things, but the largest issue would be access to the volume of water. Lithium plants take up a very large amount of water. And in fact, when we do the debrief on these requests, you know, quite often, we, you know, we talk about what we could do better or what we could do different or things that we can't do anything about. When the group of us as the hub talk about these things, the reality was that we suspected that there'd maybe be one site in Western Canada that would be able to facilitate that. Certainly with the addition of infrastructure, anything's possible, but the infrastructure to support that project is something that, you know, certainly we don't, we wouldn't have the grasp or the reach to do in the time that they wanted us to respond to it.
Mr. Reeve, just one other, one other comment. I sent out an email to everyone, I don't know, a month or so ago, but it was, it ended up not being seen by anyone because it ended up kind of getting coded as gibberish or something or whatever. But anyway, it was, the point was when the Edmonton Airport Authority announced in Edmonton hydrogen fueling stations and they're buying 10, they've got 10 hydrogen-fueled vehicles, now they're going to buy 500 more by 2024. I just thought, man, maybe the MD of Bonneville could kind of, you know, kind of jump on that and say, well, you got cars that can drive around Edmonton now and the airport and they can fuel up there. But when do we start looking at, well, let's attract those same vehicles now to the MD of Bonneville. So, you know, it'd be nice if we could have maybe somebody, maybe economic development, reach out to Edmonton Airport Authority, have that discussion, find out, you know, is there any way that the MD of Bonneville can get involved in hydrogen as a fueling, as a fuel source? And then have those same vehicles be able to drive from, people land in Edmonton, rent an electric hydrogen-fueled vehicle, they can't right now go anywhere except around Edmonton. Maybe, maybe we can be a lead in hydrogen, put it in a fueling station.
Reeve Kalinski to Councilor Swagert. At the Global Energy Show, I had an opportunity to meet with the folks from the Edmonton area and talk to them about their 500 challenge. And certainly, they would love to have other partners involved in that challenge. If it was directed by council or senior administration, certainly that's something I would, I would pursue. It's not something that's currently in any of our plans written down that specifically.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, I would also add that if council's interested in moving down the hydrogen pathway, we would take direction from council on that because this potentially could be, would require significant investment on behalf of the MD to put in those facilities in the MD. I don't think we're opposed to it from a philosophical perspective, but it would require an investment and council would have to give us some direction if we wanted to spend some money on that. And I don't, today have a clue as to what the size of that investment would be potentially, Mr. Kovachas, but I...
Reeve through to CEO Hogan. Certainly, I can, I can provide a background report or a white paper at some point in time as well as part of the, as we move towards that, that motion. I'm quite willing and prepared to do that, that's part of my job.
Sure, thank you.
Yes, Councilor? Yeah, I'd love to see us do something. You know, I, maybe I'll ask the deputy Reeve to comment on, you know, the initiative Pincher Creek put in. So Pincher Creek invested, I think, $2 million bucks and they put in electric fueling stations to attract vehicles from BC through into Alberta and up to Edmonton. And so that opened that whole corridor for them. So, you know, if we got the opportunity to be the first municipality in Alberta besides the Edmonton Airport to put in hydrogen fueling stations, that really starts things. And if we can ask maybe admin to at least look into, you know, what are costs, what sort of thing, you know, what do we need to do? That might be a great start on us kind of reaching, doing something really special for the MD.
Okay, thank you. Reeve Kalinski through to Councilor Swagert. Just, just for context or background, I was involved in the second project that was proposed for electric charging network, and that was from Edmonton to Jasper. And certainly, I have the majority of that information from that particular project and the Crow's Nest project and the Kootenay project that I could make available. Okay?
Yeah, just to be clear, though, I'm really interested in hydrogen, not so much electric because I think we all know that the electric grid will never handle millions of electric vehicles, but...
All right. Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Sipchuk.
You mentioned on April 13th, doing business, US American Chamber of Commerce. What kind of feedback you get from the American, is there any American Chamber of Commerce interest or?
So there's a, there's a significant interest right now called reshoring. And so what's happening due to supply chain issues and other things that are happening overseas, many, many American companies are looking at bringing their resources back to North America. And so that would obviously open up opportunities for both Canada and Mexico for increased, increased trade. And so this particular session was, was about, you know, that in general terms, but in specific terms, talking about what the logistics look like from a sort of a transportation perspective and, and working through any types of paperwork at the border.
Okay, any more questions?
Go ahead.
Okay, you also had a booth there at the, or Bonneville Oil and Gas Show. What was the feedback there and is there, was there any possibilities coming?
So the question, I just want to make sure the question was, what were my thoughts on the Bonneville Oil and Gas Show?
On the trade show, like what the MD, could you guys man the MD booth there economically?
Yes, yes.
And what was the feedback there and any possibilities?
Yeah, it was actually, it was a great opportunity for me to get to know not only the local businesses that are here, but businesses that currently are trading here but don't have offices here. So I made my rounds and I reached out to four different companies that are currently doing business here but don't have offices here and set up opportunity or business visits to talk about future opportunities. So I would say that the Bonneville Oil and Gas Show was actually more beneficial for the MD than going to the Calgary Energy Show at this particular point in time based on leads that were generated and the quality of the conversations that I had with other exhibitors.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
So I know I don't look like Rod Gilabault and I wish he was here, but he is sick at home, so I will present his Parks and Recreation section of our report today. He did, however, provide me with speaking notes, so I will not be speaking very deeply, but I will repeat them for him. So our first slide here today, as mentioned in previous council meetings, we have placed 11 trail counters strategically throughout our trail systems within the MD. We have nine trail cams placed all around our Moose Lake Trail System, one in Ardmore and one inside our Muriel Lake Park on the natural trails. The trail traffic we have counted has been taken for the months of May and June and averaged, and an average for those two months. The Shaw House Trail is our busiest trail, which will account for campground guests, boaters and playground users, and they have been increasing in these, in these numbers, actually quite, you'll notice, quite significantly higher than in other locations. We are planning to install more trail cams when time permits to assist with more accurate tracking for future planning of trail development. Our next slide highlights a total number of nights booked for the 2022 and 2023 camping season within the months of May and June for comparison. Cold Lake is our largest, most popular and busiest campground and is on top with 2,114 total nights booked in 2023 in comparison to 2022 with 1,778 nights booked. Chicken Hill is one of our average-sized campgrounds with the least amount of nights booked within the first two months of reservations, however, with a slight increase over last year. In 2023, we were sitting at 84 total nights booked and 67 booked in 2022. In the third slide, our, it highlights all of the current and recent projects of our, that are, that this department manages and operates on the capital side. So our MD Moose Lake Trail Project is now fully completed, as well as our Vezo Beach Boat Launch, which was completed and in use since May long weekend. La Corrie Recreation Park is 95% complete. Soon to start is that final piece, which is a picnic shelter building. The Angling Lake Boat Launch is, although it was just after this quarterly report, is now 100% complete and in full use for the public. The inter-municipal trail master plan is 95% complete, where administration did bring forward to council, or our consultants brought forward to council, that document and administration will be coming back here shortly with our recommendation actions forward. And the Cold Lake Boat Launch is still waiting as of the end of June for the formal notice from the province approval to proceed following the FNC stage. Lastly, just highlighting that those are continuing levels of service standards on an operational side for Parks and Recreation. On the Visitor Information and Interpretive Center, we, the QT report shows the first month of operations with a little bit over, a little over 200 visitors coming through the doors, May 28th to June 30th. And we did note that there were a few that came as far as Missouri and Texas. Hours of operation for the center during our peak, this is our peak season, so they are Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 6:30 PM, and Saturdays and Sundays, 10 AM to 6 PM. Our small trading post store, which shows our local artisans mainly, the first month of sales came in at just over $1,300 and ranged from pottery mugs to t-shirts, curated cards and souvenirs. The best-selling items for the month of June were the fish pillows and gourmet marshmallows. I personally have bought two fish pillows. They're very cool. Quarter three will provide, we'll be able to bring council an operational picture of the Shaw House Visitor Information Center Trading Post and concession, as the concession wasn't actually open until after this quarterly report timeframe. And just a quick comment that the concession is only operational during our peak season while, while the, it's nice and warm outside and people will enjoy ice cream. Any questions?
Yes, go ahead, Councilor Sipchuk.
On the counter, on the trails, how many of, what percentage of that is wildlife?
Through the reef, that's, that's why we also include and want to increase the number of trail cams we have, to try to ensure that we're differentiating which ones are wildlife versus people.
All right, thank you.
Good. Okay, next, I'm actually going to ask our Community Services Coordinator, Caitlin Degenhart, to come and talk about our community funding report.
Hi.
So today, I'm excited to present our second quarter report for our community giving. As you guys know, the municipality has a number of policies and funding avenues that provide support to local groups, organizations and societies to help support wonderful, the wonderful community we live in. So on our first page, you'll see our community action grant. In this quarter, we received four additional applications in Q2 to bring our year-to-date average of 18 applications. These applications varied from events and programs to the major capital projects that you guys had voted on in June. The two amazing projects were selected by council to receive funding under the major capital projects level to, in a total award amount of $244,195. Moving into our donations and sponsorship policy, we saw a steady increase in the number of submitted requests for both monetary and in-kind and promotional item donations. As you'll see in the report, just over $23,000 in monetary donations and sponsorship and $11,000 in in-kind and promotion and promotional items were provided to our community to help with local events, programs and youth sports. These in-kind donations can include picnic tables, bleachers and moving items to and from locations. In the category of council giving, a total of $24,000 was provided in monetary support, bringing the total, current total for 2023 to $94,000 of support. Q2 was provided organizations such as Haying in the 30s, Hearts for Healthcare and the Bonneville District Chamber of Commerce. To finish off my update to council, the community operating grant has received 14 out of the 27 eligible applicants for, as of June 30th, and the application deadline for these operating grants is September 15th. Does council have any questions?
Thank you, any questions? You get off the hook today, great job. Oh, oh, wait, wait, wait.
Sorry, I just, I did have, the community operating grants, is there, is there just one deadline a year?
There is, yes.
So they have to, they have to meet 15th of September? Okay.
Yes, that's correct, and it comes on a first, come first serve basis for the applications.
Thanks, Dana, for, yeah, thank you. Now you're done. We have one more, one more.
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve and council.
Good afternoon.
So this is the, the funnel in these quarterly reports for our department, and this is for Kinsu Ridge. So our, this is... So our, this is, I'm showing a couple of things here, but we're gonna be focusing primarily on March to June, but to show comparisons from the, that January to June, to give an overall picture of where we stand with regards to revenue and expenses. So in comparison to 2022, we are up significantly over the, that same period with our sales. We actually broke a number of records in that period. And when we look at the total annual revenue compared to our current standings, we're up a three-point-five percent over 2022. So we're, we're trending in the right direction, which is a good, good thing for, for us as we're moving into this year, the second year of year-round operations. So with some comparisons here, from last year to this year, with our adventure park, we're slightly up over last year on the adventure park, closing in close to $20,000 in the first couple of months. There, basically, the, the end of May to, to June was when we were open there. And same with the, our restaurant, The Ridge, and our concession as well, which is up significantly over that same, same period, just short of $25,000. You can see the revenues beaten, broken out there more clearly to see where, where the large amounts are, primarily with our food and beverage. Summer camps have been really, really popular this year. They, they've been a huge hit and we're, we're very happy on its inaugural year that most of them were almost sold out completely. So that was a, a good news story on a, on a brand-new program. When we look at the adventure park tickets, so overall, we're up over last year, around almost two hundred compared to last year. This was a lot due to the fact that we had school groups come out this year, which was a massive increase over last year. We had over four hundred and fifty-two students and, and the teachers and volunteers come over that period. Our individual sales, on the other hand, those were down, though the, the school tickets did make up for that. Group visits were also up by forty-seven, and our total sales are a twenty-six percent increase over last year. When we move to food and beverage, these are also up again over last year for this period. You can see, we, we kinda broke it out just for, for interest sake on where we're seeing the biggest sales and demand for things at, from our food and beverage services. And we're currently, to that, the end of June, we were up fourteen thousand over that same period from last year. Again, no, should note that in April, we had to close due to some, some issues with our well, so that unfortunately kinda didn't help with that, but we were able to reopen again in May, and we still saw some, some great increases there. With this, to, to help push these and, and continue driving people out there, our marketing has increased. Our page visits are up about eleven and a half thousand over 2022. Our audience on Instagram is up around eighteen thousand over 2022, and same with our page reaches for both Facebook and, and Instagram. So we're, we're reaching a lot more people, we're getting, getting a lot, a lot more out there in those, those media areas. Our top locations are, are the same as last year with Cold Lake being the top location we reached, followed by Edmonton, Bonneville, Lloydminster and St. Paul. They seem to be where the, the majority of, of people are coming from and, and checking us out. The highlights, we, we are actively running radio advertisements, you may have heard some, the Adventure Guide brochures through Facebook, Instagram. We're creating the Ridge website, which we're, should be seeing a, a draft version for us fairly soon here. As well, we joined with the Go East sticker station, which we've had kinda located at our VIC as well and, and different areas to help entice people out to those, those certain, and they've, they've actually drawn quite a few people. It's funny to hear the stories, they've, they've hit like ten places in a day and, and they just make it just before we, we close and, yeah, and they're racing everywhere. And the Kinnisou Ridge Resort website is also gonna be revamped as well. So when we get to some of the projects and initiatives, we got a lot of special events going on to help promote The Ridge. So we have Wing Night, which has been very successful, a lot of people coming out for that. We tried a new thing, Music Poker and Trivia Night. That's been picking up. We just actually had our last one here last week and it was quite, quite popular, but that's, that's done for this season. Sunday brunches are by far the, the most popular thing that we, we have right now, and it's, it's very, very nice to see. Other things, we just finished up with the Alberta on the Plate. That just coincided with Open Farm Days as well, and we, we did some joint with some local producers like Charlotte Farms and, and had a meal put together promoting our local produce and, and stuff. So that was quite, quite successful. We're also gonna be coming up with Wine Pairing Night and Cherry Grove Show and Shine will be coming up here, just to, to name a couple of things. Target Golf, while it wasn't up in this quarter, it did open for July long there. We had that ready to go and, and it's been picking up with a lot of people hearing about it and coming out and, and stuff. And quite, quite nice to see, we had, having groups as far as Lloydminster come up and, and, and go with that. So that, that's been, it's been fun to see. And again, the summer camps, they, they were highly, highly successful. This is actually our last week for the summer with them. And our, these numbers were put together a couple of weeks ago, but both the, the last two weeks there in August, or the August there, we had actually thirteen, I believe, in our nature camp and twenty-six ended up for the, the sports camp. So very, very popular, and the kids are just ecstatic and, and then they, they sleep on the way home. So that's the parents' dream right there, so. And the big one that we're working through is the planning and design for the mountain biking, hiking, Nordic trails and glamping. So we're just working through now with the planning, design, engineering and approvals stage of this. They're gonna be coming up with some final budget numbers that we can work with so that we can begin construction here through council approval if, for Phase Two in 2024. And that's, that's, that's all I have.
Questions? Yes, go ahead.
No, just a comment, I, I just to put in a plug for the Target Golf, because it was, you know, really fun. It's just that for people who don't know, it's like going to a driving range, except you're hitting up the hill at Targets and it, it really is a good time. So, you know, get out there everyone, it was fun to do. I, I will just ask though, maybe an update on the swing, because I, I was out there and the swings was working for a while and then not, so are we able to get that going?
Through the reef, the swing is still, we're working with Crystal Term, the manufacturer, as well as McElany, who was our consultant on the project, to meet ADERSA's requirements for it. So they have to re-engineer, there's some, some issues with the winch and, and the safety switch. And so they're working with Crystal Term to try and develop a, an engineered solution that ADERSA will then certify us on. To date, they're still, still working through that, and it's taking, taking unfortunately quite a while. But dealing with, over in Germany and getting through it's, there's, that's a bit of the delay there.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Sutcliffe. Are we seeing big usage on the adventure park?
Yes, through the reef, so we'll, we'll be bringing numbers back obviously for the, the third quarter, but overall, we have seen an increase over last year for the adventure park and our food and beverage with The Ridge and, and restaurants. So that has been, has been nice to see. When we come back in the third quarter, yeah, it should be some good numbers there. Not significant, but we're, we're on the right, right trend.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Sutcliffe.
So it's looking like it's the beginning of a year-round resort, eh?
Yes, through the reef, yes. It's starting to pick up, we're starting to see. More so noticed it this month in, in August, a lot more people are, are coming out and, and stuff. And maybe it's the word's getting out and, and stuff, so. But yeah, August has seemed to be a bit more busier than, than July just overall, so.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. My nervousness with the adventure park is when I look at the numbers from a business perspective, although we're up with the schools, we're down three hundred and seven individual tickets. And I, I worry that it, the, the adventure park itself for individual use, people go, use it once, it's kinda cool, and then we see the numbers begin to drop on the individual tickets. The schools go out and we have the school group come, and then we don't get the kids coming back out saying, let's go back out and do it again, because they did it once. So I'm, I'm going to be watching over the next, over the next twelve months, that individual ticket use and watch what it, what it compares to in terms of the school use. Maybe we start focusing more on group use and less on individual tickets. We may have to do something in terms of revamping that, that particular business model in terms of what that looks like. But the, the number of the individual tickets dropping is, is not a huge concern today, because it's, it's early days, but I am, I am concerned seeing the drop in individual tickets. We've, we've compensated with an increase in group sales, but, but I'm, I'm gonna be watching with interest the individual sales over the next year, so.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, that's a good comment, but when that system was designed, I think we kind of expected maybe that, but it was designed to be added on to, so, you know, we kinda thought maybe over the years we'll make it bigger and then it just attracts more folks or whatever, because you're right, you're, you do it once or twice and you've kinda done it, so. But there, the potential's there to make it bigger. And then just even getting the swing working, you just attract a few more folks. And then with the overall, you know, the yurts and everything else and the mountain biking, and it's, gives you opportunities to do everything while you're out there spending a few days, whatever, glamping, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Through the reef, I should comment also that sometimes that when you see reductions in, in, in numbers of, of attendees, it's, it's due to weather, that, that wasn't the case. We had extraordinary weather in, in June, so that, that also can't, yeah, didn't, didn't help unfortunately, but.
Although extraordinary weather was maybe hot too though, wasn't it? Because I was out there when it was hot and it was like, oh my god.
But as, as Counselor Swagert mentioned, it's adding the, the additional activities and stuff, I think, to create that, that bigger, bigger package to, to retain people there and, and have them have more experiences.
I guess, you're done, you're good? I got a question, I just, I don't know much about financial, but, you know, if you go to your 2023 year-to-date revenues and expenses, unless I'm missing something, for $200,000, it seems like we're hiring a heck of a lot more people, we're buying food all the time. I just, I can't see how it's just $200,000 more expenses than the year before when you're purchasing and you got way more people running the place. Like, unless I'm missing something, I see there's a grant's not included, I don't know. Go ahead.
Yeah, through the reef, so the majority of our revenue came from that winter season, so we made a substantial amount this year, records, and so that, that made a lot of our revenue. It is very labor-intensive though, the adventure park especially. We need around a minimum of seven staff just to, just to man it in case. We, we try to, to push things online, to have people pre-booked so that we can schedule better, but unfortunately, a lot of people just show up and when you have thirty, thirty-some people show up, then we need the staff to, to man it. So it is, it is very, very costly.
Yeah, I, I know that, but why isn't it more? Like, why, why is it only $200,000 difference between the two years? It doesn't make sense to me. Shouldn't it be higher? Like, I?
This, this is just to the, to June at that point.
I know, it's, it's same, same with the 2023, it's January to June and the other one is January to June. Unless I'm missing something here.
Sorry, we were also closed from April till mid-May, so we didn't have a lot of those staff come on board as well until, till later. So that contributed a little bit there as well, but.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Reeve, if I could just add, we, we are constantly having discussions with the management team about the labor-intensive nature of the adventure park. We could have nobody booked for the day, but in case somebody shows up, there has to be five people on the apparatus. I mean, our, our labor costs on a daily basis at the adventure park, I believe, are, the number I heard the other day was $2,700 a day. So if you had three people show up in the day and pay $35 to go on the adventure park, that's, that's the, that's our cost to doing business out there. We have no way of reducing the number of staff that have to be there from a safety perspective. So it is a very labor-intensive organization out there. It is, it requires people power just to open the doors.
Yeah, and I, I understand that, why, that's why I'm asking the question, I thought it would be more. Like, I, I just can't see it being that cheap.
I, I think there, I think there was a bunch of reasons this year. A, we were closed for six weeks when the well broke. There wasn't much going on, we didn't have restaurant staff, et cetera, et cetera, because the restaurant wasn't open. So I think, I think you start taking out fifteen hundred, $2,000 a day of labor cost for a, you know, a period of six weeks, that's a pretty big hit. So this June or January to June compared or to last January to June, I'm not sure is a hundred percent. It's accurate, it's just the data is a little skewed because of the, the closure of the restaurant for that, for that five, six-week period. But long-term, moving forward, we are at the adventure park by its very nature, including when we go to, if council approves the funding for the glamping, et cetera, et cetera. This is a very labor-intensive business with no guarantee that anybody's gonna show up. You know, for example, when we go to the glamping, we're gonna have to have cleaners who will clean the, the, the yurts and the, and the tents. But we don't know if there's actually anybody show up to book that tent. I mean, the, the tent may be booked, but we still have to have those people hired on and on staff. So it, it's gonna be a bit of a juggling and a balancing act over the next couple of years as to how that is actually managed. I think the great, the great hope out there is, is eventually getting the restaurant open seven days a week and it becoming part of the restaurant culture in the Lakeland area. The people are going to Kinnisou to go to the restaurant. We have some video this week, we've got a new, a new niche market. If anybody saw the video of the bear that was at the chalet on the chalet deck last week. Apparently, apparently we now have another niche market with Siri. But it's going to take some time to build that business up. We are seeing steady progress, particularly in the restaurant, and I, I think, I think it has tremendous potential. We just are gonna have to, we're just gonna have to push through, like any new business, that tough period at the beginning, trying to get people to come out. So, and I think there will be, have to be some tough decisions made as to what things we are not going to offer to the public if, if things can't start covering their costs. So one of the questions we'll be asking as we get into budget deliberation is, does council view Kinnisou as a service we're providing or as a, as a business? Because those are two different things. One will, one will run potentially being, if it's viewed as a service, potentially be subsidized by the municipality. If it's viewed as a business, then we need to find a way to get it to a revenue-neutral, to at least a break-even point of view. We begun to have those conversations just this week regarding, and we're gonna be asking council some very pointed questions, is what do you view Kinnisou as? Is it a service you wanna provide? Like, like roads and, and, and water and other things? Or is it a business and you want to run like a business? Because those are going to be two different philosophies in terms of what happens at Kinnisou.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. That same lady is on my phone, by the way.
She's booking supper at Kinnisou, that's all.
All right, any other questions? Well, thank you, guys, for all your reports. Are you, you got one more?
Uh, just one more, uh,
Yeah.
point, uh, for apples-to-apples comparison. Um, so twenty twenty-two, uh, are, we were open from Thursday to Sunday. Uh, this year, we're Wednesday to Sunday too. So that's, that's, uh, made some, a little bit of difference as well, um, in cost and both revenue and, and expense too. So.
Yeah, well, it should, it should be more, like, like I'm saying. It just sounds so not enough. That's all. Uh, okay, thank you. Okay, I'm looking for a motion, gentlemen? Yes. Thank you, Counselor Cravieak, for making a motion. On behalf of council, the council accepts the Planning and Community Services two thousand twenty-three Second Quarterly Report as information. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Onto nine point four, point one.
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve and council.
Good afternoon.
Uh, I'm here for Susan Walker as she's away today. So administration is presenting policy number two A point zero zero two expenditures not included in budget policy to be rescinded. During the January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three council meeting, council had a discussion pertaining to the existing procurement policy regarding the current need to bring procurement recommendations back to council where they had already been approved in the operating budget and the capital plan for the year. In the interest of efficiency, policy number two B point zero one two policy or procurement policy amendment was adapted by the council at the May ninth, twenty twenty-third, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of council, removing the requirement to bring expenditures not included in operating or capital budget to council for approval and placing the responsibility with the CIO as per bylaw one three two nine. The amended policy removes all procedural elements from the existing policy and provides the principles of action for procurement within the municipality. This is consistent with the industry best practice relating to policy development. Administration has reviewed the need for this policy and has determined that after the passing of policy, uh, C dash two B point zero one two amendment, policy two A point zero zero two expenditures not included in budget policy is no longer relevant and poses that council rescind the policy. Rescinding this policy also will help remove the potential for conflicting policy. Both policies, uh, policies have been attached for your review. So administration is, uh, requesting that council rescinds policy number two A point zero zero two expenditures not included in budget policy as it is no longer required.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move that we rescind the policy.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council rescinds policy number two A zero zero two expenditure not included in the budget policy as it's no longer required. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Onto nine four point two.
Okay, which is bringing us to the unaudited financial statements for the Ju- as of June thirtieth. The purpose of this report is to present council with financial results for the second quarter ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Regular quarterly financials reporting provides council with the required financial information to make informed business decision and assist in meeting council's responsibility to the community as well as adhering to the CIO's legislated responsibility to inform council. So attached are five reports, appendix A being the statement of operations. So again, you can see that the revenue is pretty much, uh, at a hundred percent and then the expenditures are on par except for two. One of them being transfers to the other governments, which is only at nine percent, and that's because our ICFs are usually paid, uh, at the latter part of the year as well as our, uh, the one that says other, which is at one percent, and that's usually uncollected, which we, uh, use at the end of the year as a year-end, uh, adjusting journal entry. I don't know if there, do you have any questions on that one or do you want me to move forward?
Any questions on that? No, continue. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, appendix B is the statement of financial position. So this is our assets over liabilities as well as our tangible capital assets and inventory with the accumulated surplus. Now, the surplus there is for the year, um, but on, um, on the, um, operations report, you can see that we have the, uh, surplus for the, for the period at sixty-seven million, two hundred and thirty-seven, four ninety-six.
Thank you.
Any questions on that one? Nope.
Any questions, gentlemen? Nope.
Appendix C is the schedule of reserves. So each reserve has been listed here with the dollar amount that we have in each reserve with the total amount of reserves at eighty-seven million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. Okay. Uh, appendix D is our investment continued, continuity schedule. Continuity schedule is, I think, the right word. Um, and it's showing that we have in, uh, investments, um, and the portfolio sits at eighty-four million, five hundred and ten thousand, uh, seven hundred and ten dollars.
You're allowed one, one word wrong at the Reeve.
Yeah, that's the one I use all the time, continuity.
The Reeve gets about twenty wrong per meeting, so you're allowed one.
Okay. Moving on to con- to appendix E, which is the, uh, twenty twenty-three capital projects listing. So in there, we have all the twenty twenty-three projects listed with the project totals. Um, the budget amounts are there as well with the variances on the side. We also have some projects that haven't been started yet. So you can see that there's a zero, but, uh, in the third quarter, our projects have really, uh, gotten started and there's a lot of movement there. So you'll see in the third quarter that, um, we'll have quite a bit of activity for our capital reports.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, gentlemen, just looking for, uh, motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Slipchuck, for making a motion on behalf of council. That council accepts an audited financial statement report for the two thousand twenty-three second quarter ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a, hold on, I gotta wait.
Carried, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Yeah, you as well. Okay, nine point five, one, chief.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Uh, this is regarding a proclamation request of the Lakeland Centre for Fetal Alcohol Syndrome. Lakeland Centre for FASD has submitted proclamation request to the MD Bonneville to acknowledge September ninth, twenty twenty-three as FASD Awareness Day within our municipality. Fetal alcohol spectrum disorder is a lifelong disability that affects the brain and body of individuals who were exposed to alcohol while in the womb, which continues to be the leading disability in Canada. With sixty-one percent of pregnancies unplanned and eighty percent of Albertan women reporting drinking in the last year, the Lakeland Centre for FASD wants to ensure that our communities know the risk of alcohol use during pregnancy. The Lakeland Centre for FASD will be hosting several events around Lakeland region on FASD awareness. An attach for council's review is their request letter and the draft proclamation. It is our recommendation that council approves the proclamation, I got one as well. Uh, uh, September ninth, twenty twenty-three is fetal alcohol spectrum disorder awareness day within the municipal district of Bonneville. And the proclamation, uh, is, is attached as appendix B if the Reeve is interested and council approves.
I guess, should I read it first and then approve it or approve it first?
Uh, probably best to have council approve it and then, and then read the proclamation.
Okay, I need a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Slipchuck. On behalf of council, that council approves the proclamation of September ninth, two thousand twenty-three as fetal alcohol spectrum disorder awareness day within the municipal district of Bonneville. Any discussion on this?
I just think the meetings are too long.
Thank you, Mike. Any other discussion? Uh, I'll call for the vote. That's carried.
Okay, fetal alcohol spectrum disorder awareness day, September ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, FASD, is diagnostic term that describes the range of effects that can occur in a, in a individual who is prenatally exposed to alcohol. And whereas children and adults with FASD in Canada are, and around the world, experience lifelong physical, mental and behavior difficulties as well as learning disabilities. And whereas caregivers, families, professionals, individual living with A, sorry, with FASD as well as others around the world, will observe International FASD Awareness Day on September ninth, two thousand twenty-three with a minute of reflection at nine oh nine AM. Now, therefore, I, Barry Klinsky, Reeve of the M, Municipal District of Bonneville, do hereby proclaim September ninth, two thousand twenty-three to be fetal alcohol spectrum disorder awareness day in the municipal district of Bonneville. I encourage everyone to act with compassion and understanding towards individuals who have experienced prenatal alcohol exposure and to take both personal and a professional responsibility to become better informed about FASD and prevention stra- strategies. Thank you.
Okay, on to nine point four point two.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of the council. This is regarding Lakeland Lodge and Housing Foundation Board Appointments. Administration has received a request from an MD resident for consideration to be appointed to the Lakeland Lodge and Housing Foundation Board as a member-at-large representing the municipality. The terms of reference for this board do allow the MD to appoint both councillors and members of the public at council discretion. As administration is seeking direction on whether council would like to consider appointing an MD resident as a member-at-large at the next organizational meeting or maintain the current practice of appointing two members from council. Administration received interest from a member of the public earlier this year to participate on the board as a member-at-large. We confirm that the MD is allowed to appoint up to two members to the board from council or the public as per the Lakeland Lodge and Housing Foundation Terms of Reference. Records show that council has chosen to appoint two councillors annually for the last ten or more years. Administration is seeking confirmation from council on whether they would like to proceed with appointing two members of council as they've done in the past or if council would like to consider appointing a member-at-large to this board. If council was interested in appointing a member from the public, administration would proceed to advertise the positions for applications and bring them forward at the two thousand twenty-three organizational meeting for council's consideration. Our recommended action is the council directs administration on how they would like to proceed. And you have two options, that you direct us to advertise or that you receive this report for information in that, um, regards. No change would be made to our current, um, board setup.
Okay, thank you, Al.
I'd like to make an, uh, motion for option two, please.
I have a fine option two here. I'll just wait for it to come up on the screen, please. Okay, thank you, Counselor Slipchuck, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the Lakeland Lodge and Housing Foundation Board Appointments Report as information. Any discussion on this? Yes, Counselor.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, just, uh, curious maybe what Counselor Slipchuck's reasoning would be. Like, I've never sat on that board, but I just wondered, is it, is it to our benefit to have just all council or is it to our benefit to have a member-at-large? I just care, would like some discussion maybe from people who have been on that board, Gus?
Well, this was a, this was a request from a member-at-large, but for over ten years, we've always had two councillors, like the town of Bonneville. Uh, we had issues in the past where a member-at-large was going down south for six months and wasn't able to attend meetings. So when I brought this forward to council, they changed that to having two members, uh, of council be on the board.
Okay, thank you. Yes, uh, Counselor Crick?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm interested in hearing the discussion as well, but I, I also like the idea of having council because it's people elect the council. So then they have their elected representatives sitting on that board. So I, I support the motion, I guess, at this point anyways.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto nine point six point one.
Well, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Uh, this is regarding council invitations, uh, coming up. Uh, so the first one is, and you can see the actual invitations attached to, uh, the request for decision. Uh, Clayton Bellamy Foundation with the Arts and Golf and Gala Events, September first and second, twenty twenty-three. Clayton Bellamy Foundation with the Arts has requested the Reeve say grace at the dinner, uh, for the gala on September first, twenty twenty-three. Individual tickets for the event are available at a cost of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And I'm not sure, Stephanie, did we ever, um, ascertain as to whether or not, if the Reeve stayed for dinner, they would be getting, um, charged?
Um, all we were told was that the individual price per ticket was one twenty-five.
Yeah, I never got, I never did phone back. Yep, yep.
Uh, second is the Cold Lake Seniors Society Fall Barbecue, September the sixteenth. The Cold Lake Seniors Society has invited the Reeve and council to their annual fall barbecue on September sixteenth. Cocktails begin at four thirty with dinner to follow at five thirty. Tickets are available at a cost of twenty dollars per person and are available for purchase until the thirteenth of September. The Power Up North Entrepreneurs Conference, October third to fifth. Community Futures Lakeland and Cold Lake Regional Chamber of Commerce are hosting their Power Up the North Entrepreneurs Conference on October the third to the fifth, twenty twenty-three at the Hotel Denai and Conference Center in Cold Lake. Tickets for the cocktails and sales pre-conference networking event on October second are available at a cost of twenty-five dollars per registrant. And tickets for the full three-day conference, including the pre-conference event, are two hundred and fifty dollars per registration until August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And after September first, tickets will increase to two hundred and ninety-nine per registrant. Um, I would also put a plug in for the Power Up the North. I have sat through several Roger Brooks conferences in the past. Roger Brooks is very well-known in central and southern Alberta as a leader in both tourism and the, uh, and the economic development industry. And I think it would be a very worthwhile, um, conference for, uh, for councillors interested in economic development and tourism to attend. Uh, four is the Economic Developers Alberta Ministry Dinner, October eighteenth. The Economic Developer Alberta is hosting their annual ministry dinner on October eighteenth at the Coast Plaza Hotel in Edmonton. The cost of the registration is a hundred and thirty-five plus GST per registrant, and the hotel also have a block of rooms reserved for attendees. However, the deadline to book the EDA block of rooms is by September eighteenth. And a no-charge event is the Economic Partners Summit on September twenty-seventh. The Lloydminster Chamber of Commerce is holding their Economic Partnership Summit on September twenty-seventh with an optional pipe ceremony at eight fifteen AM at the Lloydminster Exhibition Grounds in the WLS Convention Centre. The Lloydminster Chamber of Commerce is offering one complimentary ticket per municipality valued at a hundred and twenty-five with a possible option to person, to purchase additional tickets. Uh, cost and source of funding for the Arts Gala, uh, would come from the two thousand twenty-three council grants to individuals and non-government organizations budget. The Cold Lake Seniors Society barbecue tickets are twenty dollars per each and council grants to individuals and non-government organizations would be the budget line. And they would come from, uh, Power Up the North Entrepreneurs Conference registration would be funded out of the two thousand twenty-three ward conference registration fees budget. Registration for the three-day conference, again, would come from the two thousand twenty-three ward conference registration fees budget. And the Economic Developers Alberta Ministry Dinner would come from, again, the two thousand twenty-three ward conference registration fees budget. Our recommended action is at council's discretion.
Counsel? Yes.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve attendance, uh, by council to these community events.
Um, Mr. Reeve, just for clarity, for, under council options, um, option number one lists all of the events and at your discretion, you can identify how many tickets you want to purchase per event and/or remove any items that you do not wish to attend or approve it, approve attendance to, um, as well.
Okay. You want to go with option number one?
I think I do. Uh, Mr. Reeve, just my, I guess my point is that we, I, as a council and as a MD resident or a MD, uh, council, we should be represented at these events. So if, you know, we can't all go maybe to everything, but we certainly should have representation at these events, so.
Okay. I'll go with option one. So your, your motion will be number one? Let me see, let me read these. Although not offered as a specific option, council could just approve attendance of councillors who wanted to attend and we can sort out, uh, the tickets, uh, um. Probably easier that way. Offline, we could certainly do that.
That's kind of what I thought I was doing. So that, I'd rather do that. It's kind of option one, but we're not individually picking. We'll do it kind of offline to see who can attend.
Yeah, okay. Can we do that? Let's do that.
Let's do that, because it could be a half an hour trying to figure that out here.
Well, I know myself, I've already sent a request for the Power Up North because I'm on the Albert Hub, so.
Yes.
I already sent a request.
You're good to go. Six day? At least you're honest. Okay, what kind of motion do we, just move that council approves attending the community events as followed, and then we'll put a?
Or, or just council approves, individual councillors to attend as, at their discretion, and we can sort out the ticket issue.
Later?
Later.
Okay, is that fine with you, councillor Swiger?
Perfect.
Can we rewrite that, Steph? Thank you.
Who wants to go to Lloydminster?
Okay, thank you councillor Swiger for making a motion that council approves attending the community events as followed, the five below. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Right on time, Mike.
Just click yes, Mike.
If you vote yes, you're going to Lloyd. That's carried, thank you. On to ten, ten point, just ten in general, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I'm not going to go through each piece correspondence, some of it's already stale-dated, but you can see the correspondence. The only one that I would point out is, we did provide to the seniors the letter of support for the grant. Other than that, the rest is, you can see the correspondence.
Yes, councillor Slipchuck?
I'd just like to bring up the letter from Calgary National Depression Screening Day, October second to eight. It's a free screening day. I know lots, there's lots of people, like, mental health issues is a big thing. I was wondering if we'd be able to get something like this put on our rural review, because there's a site there where it can make people aware, because it's affecting our community.
I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure Communications Department is making note of your request as well.
Tracy's shaking her head, good to go. Thank you, Donnie, for that. Any, anything else? Well, then we need a motion, gentlemen. Oh, you got another one? Okay. Deputy Reeve Fidel, you're going to make a motion? Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fidel, for making the motion that council accepts the following correspondence as information, one through seventeen. Any discussion? Thank you. I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Whoever wants to go first reports from members of council. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. C two meeting, that was July thirty-first. Just comment that the C two repaid the M D the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Agriplex renovation project, Jen Mac Hall. There's discussion about assets at the C two. The ice plant condenser replacement, about six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars by about two thousand twenty-five, and so the C two is going to come to the individual M D and town councils and ask for assistance in, in replacing that ice plant. And they, the C two actually produced a very good list of all the assets at the C two that are going to need replacement, replacing over the next bunch of years, so it's just good to have that. Munichor meeting, August fourteenth. Some, some discussion about DMO, Destination Marketing Organization, and I, I'm hoping maybe Esther or somebody else later, not necessarily this meeting, will talk to us a little bit about that. The DMO does a lot for the area, but it probably does more for the areas that actually are part of the DMO organization, and they, they fund a small amount toward that organization, and then they kind of get, have better access maybe to tourism and that sort of thing, but I'm not sure why the M D's not a member, so maybe we can have, get some input from admin later about DMO. I think it's a simple thing to join it. There's, with Riverlands and Munichor, there's a section of the trail that runs through Cold Lake First Nations Reserve along Highway twenty-eight, just east of Ardmore, that Munichor's having trouble with, and Riverlands Trail's having trouble with maintaining the trail, and I think the M D is too, because it's overgrown. So Munichor, there's discussion about it. They're gonna, I think, reach out to the M D, but try to have discussions with admin from Cold Lake First Nations about getting that trail brushed and cleared up so we can actually get in there with our equipment and, and sort of maintain it. So there may be some communication back to council on that one or to admin. September eleventh, Munichor Trail Ride from Wassetna to St. Paul, and so M D would be invited to attend that trail ride. Have to provide your own, your own quad or whatever, but September eleventh. Cold Lake Rustic Meeting, August fourteenth. Yeah, we just approved their application to update, upgrade their sewage treatment facility with a moving bed bio-reactor. They, the MBBR project recently had nine companies show interest. I think there were six companies met the criteria. Tenders will be sent out this fall to kind of start the structure for the moving bed reactors. Just as an update, that project started out at about a fifteen million dollar project. Now it's closer to a twenty-seven million dollar project, so they've had to update their borrowing bylaw. Riverland Recreational Trail Group, August fourteenth, also some discussion about the trees, replanning trees along the Iron Horse Trail. There's a, a federal program or project or program called the Two Billion Trees Project, and so Riverland Trails Munichor is going to sign up for that and, and request, I think, ten thousand trees per year for the entire ten municipalities along the trail. So I've asked Marianne to kind of reach out to the M D and have that discussion about how we can maybe advertise and get community groups involved in, in planting trees along, along the trail or areas that they see, that they see the need. Haying in the Thirties, August fifth was really, it was my first attempt at haying in the thirties, and it was, it was an amazing experience. You know, thousands of people showed up, and I, it was a nice, nice event to be to, and I'm glad that we had some M D council there and, and lots of M D folks, and town councils out there too, hopping out. Glendon Parade, August twelfth, that was very nice. Thanks for the float and stuff that we got to throw for the kids, and that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Reeve? If I could ask just councillor Swiger for some clarification on the Munichor Trail that runs through Cold Lake First Nation, what was it that you were interested in the M D do?
I think, I think, I think just the comments were that if, if Munichor is going to reach out to Cold Lake First Nations, that was suggested that they may reach out to the M D and just make sure that, you know, you're okay with us reaching out to, as a Munichor, reaching out to the First Nations, having those discussions, because it's in our M D, so to so everybody's on board and knows what's going on and.
I, I would add, I've ridden that, ridden that trail probably three times in the last month. It's a, it's a quad trail. There's nothing, it, it's actually pretty good.
Yeah, I think the only concern is they, they can't groom that trail anymore because the trees are overgrown.
Well, there's a section in there where it's, where it, where it's, but it's a, it's probably.
It's probably nice. But they're, unfortunately, they're wrecking their, their equipment by breaking things off on it, so anyway, hopefully they'll have a, they may reach out and ask if there's somebody from the M D that wants to meet with Cold Lake First Nations also, because it's in our municipality, just to have those discussions, but we'll see how that goes. You might, you might even want to have somebody reach out to.
So is the trail in the M D or is it in Cold Lake First Nations?
It's in First Nations.
If it's in First Nations, yeah, that would be, it's not in our M D. That section, that section that starts just after.
Yeah, but it starts in our M D and ends in our M D, but, so there's a two, about a two-mile section that's in.
About two miles.
It's federal, I guess, federal. It's not even First Nations, it's federal land, but.
No, I'm, it's, I'm pretty sure that's.
We've had those discussions. I'm pretty sure it's not, I'm pretty sure it's federal, but what does that mean?
That pie that's on that side of the highway?
Just that, that chunk of trail through the Cold Lake First Nations. Anyway, it's.
Well, the trail might be, the trail itself might be, but it's on First Nations land, I think. I'm not sure. I'm shooting.
Anyway, thank you.
Okay, next. Whoever wants to step up.
You want to take a break first?
No.
Okay. Okay. July fifteenth, attended the Bonneville Gun Club, four-year anniversary. It was the first time I ever went to that place, and so I kind of couldn't believe we have something like that in our community, and wish more people would get out there and experience it. It's a great thing, a great club to support and maybe get even register and be a member of them. Scott, M L A Scott's here and MP Leila Goodridge are there. Had a good, it was a good day and beautiful weather that day. We attend, July seventeen and eighteen, attended Rebranding Open House, Rebranding in Eastbourne and in Riverhurst. Eastbourne one went pretty good, the Riverhurst one didn't end up so well. July nineteenth, attended the Stepping Stones Crisis Society Groundbreaking at Cold Lake, and that, that's a beautiful, amazing facility they're going to be building there. Mr. Jason Nixon was in appearance, also, as well as MP Leila Goodridge. And afterwards, we, we went through a tour of the homeless shelter there, and it's amazing what they do with that facility. It's an old brick camp, they got like roofs, they provide for the homeless, and there were some homeless there, eating there when we were doing, again, the tour in there, and it's a, it's a well-used facility, and it's a good thing that they're doing. They can always use extra help all the time, too, with food, so if anybody wants, can donate food or something, can stop in there and donate. As well, I attended July twenty-seventh, our field days at Fort Kent, and they had a demonstration on spraying application with a drone. It was pretty amazing, and we were told there that that drone they were demonstrating with a farmer in southern Saskatchewan sprayed forty-five hundred acres with this drone in ten days. He must have been going day and night, because he only can carry like, I think, thirty gallons of.
Water and product?
But the guy said he did forty-five hundred acres in ten days. But it's a pretty interesting application where with this drone, when it becomes more feasible, drone, you'll be able to just spray your green areas instead of a desking a whole crop, so it was very interesting. July twenty-eighth, attended Victim Services Barbecue at Little Lee Park. It was a nice turnout, beautiful day. There was lots of activities, activities for the children. August first, attended M D Financial Workshop, and thank you to the staff and everybody for the very informative session. It was very interesting. And August fifth, attended the Haying in the Thirties, as most of us, I think, most of us all did, and I was really blown away by that facility and all the people that volunteered, and how far away they come from and help. I was, had the honor of serving support Mayor Alyssa Brasso and councillor Caleb Blanchett, and I couldn't believe that lineup, I didn't think it was ever going to end. And a big thank you to all the volunteers out there that make this event such a great success, and it saves a lot of spirit to the community. And August twelfth, I attended Glendon Pancake Breakfast and Parade. I had to take over from Mike for cooking flipping pancakes. He seemed to burn his a lot, but I took over, and it all ended up good. But I was really impressed with the turnout at the parade. Oh, there was a lot of people at that parade, a lot of kids. It was great to see. And then August twenty, July seventeenth and, or no, July, yes, July seventeenth and August twenty-first, attended our board meeting. They had field days, they had good attendance, good turnout in their field days, and they'll, just to let you know, they'll be coming forward, asking for support for increasing funding, and I believe we've got to, we've got to make sure we back these, back them and support them, as they are a big factor, whether farmers, ranchers, and even our hobby farmers, so we've got to make sure we continue support, because as we know, what our costs have gone up, their costs have gone up immensely as well. So just want to give everybody a heads up on that. And then there was a, just a, I'd like to see us eventually, I've been getting calls about Jake breaks in the Hamlet of La Corrie, and we'd like to see, maybe we could discuss further options of what maybe there's possibilities, what we could look at, speeding it, as well as in the Hamlet, I'm still getting calls, people saying that guys are cutting through the Hamlet to bypass the intersection. If we can start thinking of some different options in that. And also receiving concert, regarding the mileage for seniors that for to review it when, at budget time, when they increase the funding there. And that's all I have. Thank you, everyone.
Yep, thank you, councillor.
July nineteen, Stepping Stones, along with councillor Slipchuck. July twentieth was the Army Toshik Five Golf Course, accompanied by Mr. Hogan, it was Brazilco and Monty. Thank you. It was a, it was good, yeah, it was my first golf game in thirty-five years, so needs to say I was the top lead. Alberta Care, July twenty-eighth, where they had their AGM, newly appointed board, picked the director one step down, and yeah, and August first, finance council workshop.
August first, I'm sorry, August first financed workshop, and on the twelfth was that haying in the thirties. I think councillor Slipchuck elaborated quite a bit on that, but it was a good event, and I really like that all the funds from that goes straight to help victims of cancer, which is just really phenomenal. On the twelfth, parade in Glendon, and thank you to the staff that put that together, they're probably not in the room, but thanks, pass it along to them, please. And then on the seventeenth, we had a B R F A meeting. That's it for me.
Thank you. I just want to add a couple of things. Of course, I went to the Glendon Derby and Parade, and thanks to, he knew there was lots and lots of candy, they were all very happy, and I was helping with the pancakes, and everybody was saying, Mike, you're the only one who makes such delicious golden pancakes, and they're all the same size. And when councillor Slipchuck took over, it's like A and W, there's baby mama and papa kinds of pancakes, so, and then one side was burnt, the other side was raw, so they're all looking for, for my pancakes, so then I had to take him over. Also, I went to hay in the thirties to help with the supper there. I think they served like thirty-eight hundred people in forty-eight minutes, so really fantastic. And also had a lodge meeting, and the old lodge is being demolished as we speak right now, and the number of rooms is rapidly decreasing, so if any of you are interested in going to the lodge, please make your application now. So if any of you are interested in going to the lodge, please make your application now. Uh, there's only seventeen rooms in Bonnie Lodge and only eleven in the Cold Lake Lodge, so, uh, that's good news in terms of, uh, the requisitions for, from the MDs and staff, so, thank you.
Well, I'm going to set the record straight. I think both of you guys made awesome pancakes. It was the guy in the other corner that, uh, kind of was suffering and burning and making raw ones. You guys mentioned most of everything. Haying in the Thirties was, was a highlight of the summer for me as well. Uh, just one little note, uh, I, you, you see a lot of little kids and a lot of grandmas, and you're, you're helping them on and off. And there were three kids on this one, uh, one ride or setup going back to the cars, and I had these lollipops in my pocket, and I, uh, I went to give them out to the kids, and, uh, the one girl goes, I really want one, I really, really want one, and I go, okay, I gave her one. And then I gave the other girl, and I just started digging, and I had no more left for the little girl in the corner. I'm like, oh my goodness, what am I going to do? And, uh, the thing about giving, and, uh, this little girl understood it. She, uh, she was older than the little girl, and she got up and, uh, she gave her lollipop to the littler, littler girl. Didn't know who she was, it wasn't a friend of hers, and I thought, man, this kid learnt about giving, coming to Haying in the Thirties. And, uh, I was just blown away by this little girl giving up. That's a pretty big thing for a kid to give up, uh, candy. So it was one of my, uh, one of my things that I cherished the most from there. One thing I noticed about all our, uh, parades this year is I think we lack on candy, Mike, actually, a little bit. And, um, I think we should maybe put some funding into, uh, like restoring an old truck or something, and having something that we can take on the road at any kind of events and stick it out there. And, uh, I don't know if we could come up in the budget for something like that. And then, uh, we could have that thing, and then the, the poor people and, uh, that have to get these things ready every time. If we had a, some kind of a vehicle or something that's ready to go, then they wouldn't have to, you know, they could decorate the, the, this truck or whatever. I'm just throwing it out there for any different occasion, but, you know, you could park this thing at any kind of function and leave it there for the day. And I think in anywhere we go, we have the same, you know, the same unit. So I think that's, uh, kind of, I think that would be a blessing.
Maybe a vehicle and a small trailer, you know, pulling behind the, the vehicle. I just want to make a correction that all you guys made great pancakes.
So. That's a lie, I suffered badly, Mike.
Donnie, you did awesome.
I, I suffered dearly, but anyway, that was just some comments I, I had, yeah.
So, Mr. Reeve, just to your point regarding, uh, Rocky View County went down this road, uh, a bunch of years ago. And, uh, we're struggling with the parade floats, et cetera, et cetera. So Rocky View County was incorporated in nineteen fifty-five, and they went out and found themselves a nineteen fifty-five GMC. They spent about fifty thousand on the restoration on that truck. That truck sits inside their lobby most of the year. It's actually in the lobby and you walk through the front doors. But that's what they use for their parade float, it goes, uh, it goes wherever. It's painted in Rocky View colors, it's got Rocky View, uh, logo, uh, on the side of it. They do have somebody from the shop who drives it, because it's, it's, it's a, the, the internals on the truck are stock, so it's not the easiest thing in the world to drive. But the outside is completely restored, it looks good, they sit in the box, and it goes to, in Rocky View, goes to all the parades, Springbank, out to Langdon, Bragg Creek. It, it, it makes the rounds, and that is the parade vehicle. So everybody gets the same parade vehicle as opposed to one group getting, uh, one vehicle, one getting another. In terms of candy, I'm not sure if council realizes it, but this year we spent about four thousand dollars on candy. So if council wants more, we can certainly put in the budget, but we did spend, uh, about four thousand on candy. Maybe we shouldn't be too handy in candy, maybe it should be one hand as opposed to two. But we did spend four thousand dollars on candy this year. So, uh, I, I'm not opposed to the idea of finding a vehicle. Uh, we could certainly find something that matched that the year we were incorporated or, or something to that effect. Uh, it, we just need some budget money to, um, to, uh.
Okay, it's something we can definitely look at.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay with that? Yeah, let's go. All right, thank you, council. I need a motion to go on camera. Make a motion, go on camera. Thank you councillor Slupczek. All, uh, a call for the vote? We're all in? All in favor then? That's carried. Oh, she's got it up. Okay, welcome back. We're looking for a motion, councillors? Yes. Councillor Kryjak, thank you for making a motion on behalf of council. The council points Brad, I just, Domenique, as a member-at-large on the Regional Sports Tourism Committee for a four-year term to expire August two thousand twenty-seven. Any discussion on this? Seeing then, all, all those in favor? That's carried, thank you. Looking for a motion to? Thank you councillor Slupczek, all in favor? Good, adjourned. Thank you.